Good evening. It's 7:00 PM and today is December 20th, 2022. My name is Fred Chase. I will call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. If the councilors would kindly join me in a salute to our nation. Thank you very much. The, um, the council has not been notified of the recent passing of any veterans in the town, but as I'm sure many of you are currently aware that very recently we, we learned about the passing of Captain Eric Elder of the Bridgewater Fire Department. And I would ask, please, if we could commemorate a moment of silence in his honor in respect of his passing on December 14th of this year. Thank you. I thank you very much. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from the council meeting of December 6th, 2022. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, and if we could have, please, a voice vote in favor of approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none.
I abstain.
You have abstained. Yes, that's right. Thank you, Consulate. Announcements from the President. I have just a couple of very brief announcements, but having just observed a moment of silence with respect to the passing of Captain Elder, I, um, I did have an opportunity to attend the, um, the service that is actually still ongoing right now at the, uh, at the Chapman Funeral Home and, as I'm sure we're all aware, that the passing of any member of public safety or, or law enforcement in any town, anywhere, brings out a tremendous following of the brethren of those officers and public servants. And this was no exception. There were a great many local area towns that were represented by police and fire personnel today, which is always very, very heartwarming to see. And I'm sure it, it really was a very soothing, had a very soothing effect for the, for the family to see so many of the, of their compatriots present. For my part, I was also just very taken by the, the great outpouring from citizens, from friends and family. And I certainly want to extend for myself and on behalf of the Town Council, our sincere condolences to the family and friends of Captain, Captain Elder. Just one other point, if I may, but as I think the town is becoming well aware, we have scheduled a, a special town election on January 7th. And it's apparent that, that at least several members of the Town Council presently, perhaps more, we don't know, but at least three members of Town Council are not expected to return to the Council when we convene again in January. And I just thought it appropriate to take a, just a moment to, to mention and to just have a couple of words of acknowledgement for those members. I, I think I'd like to begin. I know he's not present this evening, but Pete Colombo, as we all know, he's the, among the three of you who will not be here in January. Pete is the longest-serving council member, and he did extraordinary work over the course of, of years with respect to the, particularly the Community and Economic Development Committee. And I think he was actually present at the very formation of that committee. And I just wanted to acknowledge his, um, his many efforts on behalf of that group and council overall. He's certainly done a tremendous amount of work over the course of years and we thank him and acknowledge him. So too, Consulor Souza, who is here with us tonight, I'm happy to say, is going to be leaving and ending his term of service with the Council and I think we are all in agreement with respect to the tremendous degree of passion that Consulor Souza brings to everything he does, everything he brings before the Council, every, every comment and every vote that takes place here, certainly with respect to initiatives with respect to veterans. We know you're a staunch supporter. Uh, community safety measures are certainly very important, have always been very important to you. And there are just many other areas, but we just wanted to pay a moment of acknowledgement to you for all that you brought to the Council and, uh, and of course, you're the tree man of the Council. And, and because of your departure, we actually had to form a tree committee. And of course, Consulor Rushton, it's, uh, there's, there's really a tremendous amount to be said during, about your term of service with the Council. And in my experience, uh, I was happy to serve as Vice President of the Council under your leadership. What you've accomplished with respect to the, um, the fire department in town in terms of the really bringing to the fore the, the need for and accomplishing, you know, getting, getting approved, the new fire headquarters building for the fire department, which was so sorely needed. A tremendous accomplishment. To say nothing of the fact that all of this was transpiring during COVID, when you had to conduct these meetings remotely and, you know, you had to find a way to help us to maintain our work as a council in doing so. So just to those three councilors, uh, a tremendous debt of gratitude. I think we all owe you and, uh, and our thanks. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a proclamation this evening. And this is a proclamation to honor Jim Campbell, and I'll read this for the benefit of everyone. Whereas Jim Campbell has served on the Recreation Commission, now known as the Parks and Recreation Commission for 37 years. And in his service to the Commission, Jim has been instrumental in many notable accomplishments, including bringing a trailer from East Bridgewater Center where it became a major traffic jam to the Bob Stern's Little League Field, where it is now located and known as the Snack Shop. Whereas Jim has participated in running an annual snowball tournament to raise funds for muscular dystrophy. And whereas Jim was among the first to envision a golf course on the site of the Chaffey Farm, which is now Old Scotland Links, and has served on the Golf Study Committee and later as a member of the Golf Commission. Jim was an essential member of the effort to build the Charlie Simons Clubhouse and extended help to Charlie in any way needed. Whereas Jim was the first Recreation Commission representative appointed to the Community Preservation Committee. Whereas most recently, Jim was among the forefront of those heading the effort to construct pickleball courts at the Senior Center. Whereas Jim has always been passionate in all aspects of his responsibilities. Therefore be it resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council hereby extends their gratitude to Jim Campbell for his dedicated service to the Town of Bridgewater, Parks and Recreation Commission, and his many additional civic and charitable and leadership initiatives beneficial to the Town of Bridgewater. And I have signed this as of December 15, 2022. We congratulate and we thank Jim Campbell for all of his tremendous work and well and all of his endeavors going forward. Thank you. Moving on to citizens' open forum, and I would invite any citizen who cares to step forward to address the Council to please kindly identify yourself and your street name, and please limit your remarks within three minutes. Thank you.
Question number one. Quote, "I watched the video and the speaker, I'd add that the black market sales of marijuana have stayed high because the THC levels are so high. Also, please note, you can overdose smoking marijuana or eating gummies. Police cannot do field sobriety tests as THC stays in the system for 30 days with no separation possible between the THC and the system on the day of an incident or 30 days prior. Also marijuana is illegal in college campuses because all colleges and universities accept federal money." Passing question number one would absolutely cause problems for Bridgewater State University. Consulor Wood has no real argument on he brought in isn't honest. It's a cash business. What they take in. Now, this feedback was not solicited. Uh, there are concerns by. I'd also want to share with you yet another study published this time in the Journal of American Medical Association, which suggests that marijuana was no better at relieving pain than a placebo. Twenty different studies conducted from around the world involving 1,500 people were compared and summarized. This meta-study looked at the results of randomized controlled trials in which marijuana was compared with a placebo for the treatment of clinical pain. The studies looked at a variety of different pain conditions and types of marijuana products, including THC, CBD, and synthetic cannabis. These treatments were administered in a variety of ways, including via pill, spray, oil, and smoke. Surprisingly, the analysis showed that pain was rated as being significantly less intense after treatment with a placebo, with a moderate to large effect depending on each person. It was also observed that there was no significant difference between marijuana and a placebo for reducing pain. How interesting is that? What this and other studies reveal is that the marijuana industry continues to overestimate and exaggerate the effectiveness of medical marijuana, which raises the following question. If this is true for medical marijuana, then how can we believe what they tell us about recreational marijuana and supposedly how good it will be for our town? When was the last time any of you saw a reputable study that confirmed how safe and healthy marijuana is and how it actually improves the lives of people living in those communities where recreational marijuana is sold? My guess is few, if any, with the reason being that those studies simply don't exist. For if they did, proponents would be using them to convince you otherwise. Everyone should consider and reflect on all the information that has been presented to this body over the past year and try to envision what the future health and safety of our town might look like if question one passes. And ask yourselves, is it really worth the risks? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valde. Are there other citizens who care to step forward? Mrs. Neary.
Good evening. Hope I can make this work out since my printer wasn't working today. Kat Neary, Lakeside Drive. I know that you have heard most of these facts. However, I'm hoping that some residents view these council meetings and they may pick up some more information from what I'm going to say tonight. One of our councilors points out that many shops are not far from our town, and I agree on the geography. If an adult wants marijuana, they only have to go a short distance. So that's not a problem for people in our town. However, statistics do show that more availability of pot leads to increased usage among teens. That is one reason I don't want pot shops in our town. Unfortunately, there has been a rush to legalize marijuana everywhere. This is because of the industry, a real moneymaker for them, but it is still federally illegal. Town officials are focused on revenues, at least some town officials, and not the welfare of our young people. Long-term use by teens reduces their adult IQ. In other words, steady pot consumption by kids makes them stupider. And we all know that as kids, we did dumb things too. So you have to watch out for those kids. Anyway, is this how we are going to help our kids achieve their dreams? In Colorado, cannabis-related ER visits jumped threefold, partly because of edible consumption that has psychoactive THC in it. Marijuana is now more potent, and you folks all know that. But hopefully, people that are listening to council meetings didn't know that before, and now they will. Our U.S. Surgeon General states, "No amount of marijuana is safe for the developing brain of an adolescent." Again, marijuana will not plug a budget gap. However, it was recently stated that we have $3 million in free cash. I'm not sure how that is appropriated. And we have been designated to receive $3 million in the American Rescue Plan Act funds. I don't know how much has come in or if the whole three has arrived. You folks can figure that out. Also, Massachusetts just passed question four on our last ballot, which means money for schools, roads, and bridges will be forthcoming. We don't need drug money. We'll manage and we'll protect our young people. I thank you for listening, and I hope you all have a happy holiday.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Neary. Other citizens? Yes. Mrs. Hanson.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Good evening. Once again, I'm here to discuss the upcoming question on the ballot on January 7th. This question is asking Bridgewater residents to allow medical marijuana facilities to allow them to convert to marijuana recreational retailers while Mass General Law, 94G Section C, two, states that any medical facility that was all set, and I don't know the terminology, but was all set up by July of 2017, can convert to retail if they so wish. But it doesn't really, if you look further, the town has to, if you've had a ban in place, the town has to vote, not the Town Council, but the town has to vote to allow, you know, to be that, to be in favor of that before they can act. They can't have it if we don't allow it. This question is asking residents to change or amend our town ordinance to allow the medical to convert if they so choose. We all know they choose. They've been wanting to do it since the day they opened up. So, and they've been fighting for that since the day they opened up. It's a moneymaker for them. We have a ban in place since 2016 or 17. This Mass General Law, in my opinion, doesn't apply to our town with the ban without having this selection, or this question. And it's particular to the medical facilities. And Consulor Wood had stated that this doesn't, allowing this won't lift our ban, but I don't know how anybody could think that it wouldn't lift their ban. If you're allowing two places to sell retail, that lifts our ban. Um, and, and I haven't heard anything as to what would stop anybody else from coming in and now wanting to do it because they say, well, they have it. Why can't we? And I haven't gotten any clear answer as to where this will be limited, and that's something for people to consider. The only thing that's been presented about this is being allowing is the potential tax revenue. Please don't be swayed. I just hope the residents don't be swayed about the almighty dollar that's supposedly going to come in. Tax money will not be that much, and we will not be reaping in the dough. No one has spoken of anything else except for that tax revenue to support having this in our town. As Ms. Larry, as Pat Neary and Ed Valdi has said, I can't, I'm not going to repeat all that, but there is a lot of risk with pot. And the, unfortunately, they use the word recreational. It is not recreational. It makes it sound like it's something easy, you know, having an ice cream. People have to, the residents of the town, I'm hoping, will come forward. Residents need to ask themselves, why did they move to Bridgewater? Did they move to Bridgewater because they liked the community sense, the family orientation? Or did they want to move to Bridgewater to make it become a big city and have a lot of other things? We already have alcohol. We already have cigarettes. Yes, we already have that, but why add a third things to our equation? If you make this legal, more accessible, more people use it, and younger people, it is a known fact. Younger people get a hold of it even if they're not being sold it. So it's just a trickle down. And I saw in the news the other day, this weekend, that California, and there's a couple other, few other states that have had legal marijuana are now having an issue with, there hasn't solved the illegal sales. And in fact, it's increased the illegal sales. So we don't need this tax dollar. There's no guarantee of where this tax dollar, Mr. Wood had mentioned at the last meeting, that you'll have to decide where you're going to put the tax dollars. I always thought it was supposed to be for the schools and the roads, but that's not true. It's up to the town to decide what they're going to do with it. I don't think it should go to the schools because now we're hypocritical. So, um, I just pray that everybody that's, if there's anybody listening to this, that you really come out and vote no on this. We don't need this in our town. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Other citizens who care to step forward?
My name is Brian Perry. I live on 1065 High Street in Bridgewater. And I'm here to gather some support or complain regarding excessive use of High Street by Bridgewater rain, sand, and gravel trucks. Not just their trucks, but all their customers' trucks. The trucks are coming in from West Bridgewater and Brockton, and they're crossing Route 18 into Elmwood and taking a left onto High Street. These trucks are 50 to 80 tons. They're not, and they're loaded. And it's been going on for, for the better part of two or three years, and it's not going to get any better. There's a, a sign on Route 18 as you take a left onto, right onto High Street. It's a weight restriction sign. It's 19 tons for a tractor, for a tractor trailer. These trucks are 50 ton to 80 ton loaded, and they're going over the High Street bridge. And I, I can't, I'm surprised nobody is saying anything about it. They have Route 106. They can take out of this, they can take 104 to 106 out of the sand and gravel. And it just go, what they're doing is they're cutting off 106, and they're just going straight through Elmwood from Route 106 crossing 18. And it, it's, it's ruining the quality of life. Houses are shaking. During the summer, you know, during the, the busy construction season, there's 40 to 50 trucks that go by during the day, back and forth, back and forth. And it's like, it's, I don't understand why that, that sign on High Street, at the beginning of High Street, on Route 18, isn't being enforced. Number one. Number two, I would think that sign covers all of High Street. I mean, it's, it's, it's posted on High Street, I would think, but there's no other signs. And I don't know how that bridge can withstand the, the beatings of, uh, you know, 60, 80 ton trucks going over it constantly. You can't fit two trucks over. You can't fit a car and a truck because it's a narrow bridge. And, and I'm just here to try to get some support. It's, it's, it's pretty excessive. And they're able to eliminate, I mean, they're not being noticed because they're just cutting, they're cutting down High Street right at the end of High Street. So no one really, you know, no one obviously is really noticing it. And I've been, I've been retired for three years, and I notice it. It's, it's, it's no joke. It's, it's pretty excessive. And there is, there is, there's definitely an easy solution to it, but apparently, you know, the truck drivers are just using GPS, and they're taking the simple route, and it cuts through High Street, and it shouldn't, it should not be allowed, not for those waiting, not for those waits. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Any further comment from citizens? And seeing none, thank you all. We'll move on to appointments. We have an appointment to consider first. The appointment proposed of Mr. Robert Rulli to, as the Community and Economic Development Director. And if I could turn for a few comments to Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Robert Rulli is in front of you for ratification, and I, I strongly encourage you to vote favorably. Mr. Rulli has a wealth of experience in the community and economic development field. Most recently in Rhode Island and Warren, Rhode Island, he has really led the town through a rebirth. For those that don't know Warren, it's a little bit smaller than Bridgewater, but as many New England cities and towns, it faces a lot of the same issues that, uh, that Bridgewater does in terms of downtown redevelopment. More recently, he's been an award-winning planner. He's planned some significant improvements in Warren, including a redevelopment with climate resilience sensitivity. Also been awarded best practices in, in Grow Smart Rhode Island. He's been a project manager for the Warren wastewater treatment plan upgrade. Ironically, we're going through this very same upgrade, a little larger, a little more expensive than the one in Warren, but, but very similar. Very sensitive to climate change and housing issues. And, and he has brought a level of creativity and passion specifically in those areas. He's a nationally known speaker on those issues. He's spoken in front of the Rhode Island Legislature a number of times on, on issues specific to Warren, as well as issues more generally, climate change and, and housing issues. I mentioned he's got a fair amount of community involvement in, in all the places that he has been. He's really led community involvement initiatives and bringing people together to form consensus about, about what their communities should look like. Goal-oriented, very, very results-driven. And, and so I would certainly, as I mentioned, encourage your ratification. I will note that he has got experience not only in Rhode Island, he's got experience in Pennsylvania, Maryland, New York, and Virginia, all in, in either the private sector, nonprofit, or, or government sector. So he really brings a wealth of experience to the position, and I'm really very excited to have him come on. But I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. Are there questions for the town manager with respect to the appointment? Seeing none, if I, if I may just comment briefly, I know that Consulor Moore and I had an opportunity to, to meet with the candidate. We were, to say the least, very favorably impressed by his qualifications and his responses to our questions. In so many ways, I, I think we would agree that he appeared to us to be such an ideal candidate for the position for this town right now. And so I personally would heartily support his, his appointment to the position. I would entertain a motion for approval of the appointment.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a voice vote, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a further appointment, and that is the appointment to the Bridgewater Cultural Council of Nora Tar. And I note from her application materials that she actually would, if approved, would be representing, would represent a, a returning member of the cultural council. She had previously served and, and chaired the, the council for a number of years. And I think certainly the, uh, we know that the Bridgewater Cultural Council is in, in need of additional hands, and I would personally recommend her appointment approval. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Thank you. Any discussion? And seeing none. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there were none. Thank you once again. And congratulations to both of those candidates for appointment. Moving on, we have no hearing scheduled this evening, but we do have a number of licensed transactions as we customarily do during this meeting at the end of each calendar year. Firstly, petition P 2023-013, the licensing of establishments with alcohol and attendant licenses. There are total There are a total of thirty-five licensees to be considered in this and of course. Through your materials, we have the identity and the nature of the licenses that are being renewed by each of these applicants. And I'm I'm aware that all of the required criteria have been met with respect to inspections and and. Like matters, so I would entertain a motion for approval of petition P twenty twenty-three zero one three.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. Town manager, Mr. Dutton, all of these renewals, are we verifying that they're up to date in regards to any meals tax, anything of that nature, they're all up to date?
That is correct. All of the organizations or businesses in front of you tonight have all paid whatever they need to pay. In our in terms of taxes and they're all confirmed by the Tax Collector Treasurer's Office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I would entertain a motion for approval. I'm sorry, we can move for a, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, thank you very much. Moving on to petition P twenty twenty-three dash zero one four, the licensing of lodging houses. There are five lodging house licenses under consideration for renewal this evening under this measure. And I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second, motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Counselor Perry.
Yeah, thank you, through you to the town manager. Mr. Town Manager, have we had any issues with any of these locations over the past year at all?
We have not.
Thank you.
We have not. Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? There are none. Thank you. Petition P twenty twenty-three dash zero one five, the licensing of automatic amusements in establishments without alcohol. And this pertains to the license currently issued to Bridgewater Sports Complex Incorporated at three fifty Bedford Street. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Wood.
I think last year or the year before, we had a license application under this form for the commonly known as the cave. Are are they out of business now? Is it official?
I believe they are. They certainly haven't opted for renewal. I believe they're out of business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If we could have, please a voice vote in favor of approval, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you. Petition P twenty twenty-three dash zero one six, the licensing of an antique dealer's business. And this is pertaining to Joseph A. Brazil doing business as Rocking Horse Crafts at five twenty-nine Plymouth Street. And I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. It says hours of operation, what what is this holds license to retain use in the event of sales? What does that mean? Like when he gets a call, he shows up, meets the customer here?
I I believe that's exactly right. Doesn't does not keep regular hours, but in the event that he does make a sale of of his antiques, he wants to make sure that he retains the license.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Like if I have a voice vote in favor of approval, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you. Petition P twenty twenty-three zero one seven, licensing of class one, class two and class three auto dealers. There are a total of two class one dealerships, thirteen class two and seven class three dealerships, which are all identified in our material. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I see none. Voice vote, please, in favor, all those there say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there were none. Thank you. Petition P twenty twenty-three dash zero one eight, the licensing of secondhand gold and pawn shops. The applicant is Platinum Scrap and Recycling located at eighteen seventy-five Bedford Street. And I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Counselor Perry.
I guess I get through you to the town manager. Um, the other business I think we usually see is the one that's downtown, are they not reapplying?
That is correct. They have opted not to continue in that location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. A, if we could have a voice vote in favor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you. Petition P twenty twenty-three dash zero one nine, the thing of a common carrier taxi service business. This is Bill's Taxi Service Incorporated, operating at one thousand one Bedford Street. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I see none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Petition P twenty twenty-three dash zero two zero, the license. Without alcohol. I can see there are a total of forty licensees to be considered pursuant to this petition. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Counselor.
Question through you to the town manager. So um, do these licenses also include the the various food trucks that show up at events or is that a different license?
Those are licensed separately through the Health Department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See none. Thank you very much. That concludes our licensing transactions. We have no presentations scheduled for this evening. We could move directly to the town manager report. Is is there a report that Mr. Dutton cares to offer to the council?
Remarkably, there's nothing on the agenda, but I will say, because I think we inadvertently dropped the fire item, the the fire station planning and and. Goes on as as expected, there's not nothing to report there, so, but I will report that there's nothing to report. Well done. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Discussions, there are no discussions scheduled for this evening. Are there any committee reports that councils were prepared to make us aware of? See none. Legislation for action and the first item is. Order FY twenty-two zero one nine, eminent domain order for taking of Summer Street property. This pertains to the former mobile station on Summer Street and. We previously discussed this, this is brought before us tonight to approve, to advance it to advertising. So I would entertain a motion for approval to go to advertising for this measure.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Quick question through you to the town attorney. Mr. Rollins, just. I'm not going to quote you. What, when we go through the process, advertising, we do the final vote, we allocate the funds. Realistically speaking, how long do you think it would take to actually acquire the property?
We have thirty days from you all. Actually, it's technically sixty because your order issues thirty days after it gets voted. Then we have another thirty days to record, then we discuss with the treasurer. Everyone's what's called pro tanto share of their interest in the value of the real estate, so you guys will have appropriated those funds. We then pay them out and the at at the time of recording and the payment of the damages, we own it, we take it. So it's a it's a fairly quick process once we we get through that, assuming there is no appeal relative to the damages. That's what the appeal would be on, would be some debate about what the valuation of the property is for taking purposes, right? Maybe the owner thinks it's a higher valuation than what we think and that that would be the only discrepancy that would slow that process down.
Have you gotten any indication from the owner that may be the case? I know it it's up to him at the last minute, but.
I mean, we've gotten indication in the past that that may be the case, but.
Right.
I guess we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I will note for the record that this measure had been approved in a recent meeting from the Community and Economic Development Committee by a two to zero vote. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Send advertising.
To advertising.
Advertising.
We have a motion and and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. On to ordinance FY twenty-three dash zero zero five, general ordinance amend Article two, section fourteen, citizen comments. This. This was previously brought before the council, it may be finally considered this evening and I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Counselor Moore.
Just a clarifying question, so if this passes and somebody shows up that hasn't followed the process. Under this new language, we would not, there would there wouldn't be a mechanism for them to participate, is that correct?
Well, as actually as Counselor Wood had pointed out at one point previously, the what always does exist is for us to. To suspend our rules, which is always an option, but strictly speaking, according to the language of the provision itself. It would mean that we would ask that individual to defer his comments to a future meeting, at which point he would follow the process.
Thank you. And then one just additional question. On the business, I'm just looking at the exact language, I think it's a business. Essentially located in Bridgewater.
Right.
I wanted to just get clarification, is it is it intended to be a Bridgewater that, sorry, a business that is physically in Bridgewater? Versus one that might be operating in Bridgewater, like a trash removal service, might be located in another town, but operating in Bridgewater? This wouldn't apply to that.
Well, that's, well, let me say this, you know, the language as written did not delineate that, so I would. I would I would offer to you, that's that's perhaps a a question of some subjectivity.
Actually, looking at this, it says not withstand the foregoing the owner of record of a business, real property or leasehold interest. Does not specifically say. Service, so I mean, that would be up for interpretation, but again, to Council Woods, if someone has a compelling reason, we can only suspend the rules.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. All those in.
Forgive me.
I just have a question, so the the printed copy in front of us is identical to what was in the packet or is this a?
No.
Different.
Corrected copy.
This is the the printed copy is the corrected copy.
That's correct. That's why that was distributed to.
Okay.
The Zerat, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correct.
And all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See none. Thank you very much. Moving on to. Budget resolutions, let me just get back on track. The fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget resolution and I would defer to Counselor Wood for any comment he may have.
Sure, actually, we met with a, we had a joint meeting with the Finance Committee last Wednesday. Just to run over the the structure of the of the measure and some thoughts about it and. So so this is something, I've said this before, this is a a process that I hope continues well into the future. Past my position on the council and I I think it's worthwhile. This is fairly general language this year, it's not specific. In the early days, it's very specific, like don't use more than eighty-five percent of. You know, permit tenant permit fees and things like that. This is a little more general than that. The key points at the end, at the last page, town manager's budget objectives are really the things to focus on. So there's four of them and they give guidance to the town manager and his finance team in regards to how they should construct the budget. And present it to the town council, so it's guidance, it's not rule of law, but it's it's guidance. And so in the past and maybe in the future, if there's tough times ahead, the guidance would be a little more strict. Right now, it's it's pretty general, but it's a process that leads us into the budget process.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Further comments? I I would just add that, in my opinion, the guidance that you speak about has served the town well in recent years. And I think it's very important that we retain that that degree of of control. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could, please have a voice vote in favor of approval, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see. And the always controversial town council meeting dates. Coming here. This is resolution, our FY twenty-three dash zero zero four, town council meeting dates twenty twenty-three. And this was introduced at our meeting two weeks ago, it was not referred to any committee for further discussion and so we can. Consider it this evening, all those in favor, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So second with discussion?
Thank you very much and any discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor?
November seventh, we have an election on that day?
It's an odd year.
It's an odd, so there's no.
Twenty twenty-three.
No state?
Not in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, that's that's my only question because we always, a lot of time bump up against that, so other than that, I'm good.
Yes, Counselor Wood.
I should have, so in January, we don't have a meeting till after the election, is that correct?
That's correct.
So this is our last meeting before the election.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's an emergency and he calls.
Yes. Very good, thanks.
Thank you very much. I would entertain a a motion for approval?
We had one, we had a second, we had discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And thank you, anyone opposed?
I see none, thank you.
Business and there's a one I know of new business force. He proposed transfer order. In favor of the Bridgewater Housing Authority window replacement project. And I know that we have a wealth of material that's been supplied to us in support of that application. I would entertain a motion for referral to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion?
Just had a brief question through you to the town manager.
Yes, go right ahead, please, Counselor.
Has CPC funds been used in the past for a project like this?
The CPC funds, to my knowledge, have not been used at the Bridgewater Housing Authority, so it's first time for that. This is a an authorized or permitted use of CPC funds. And the CPC to its credit worked very closely with the applicant Housing Authority to make sure that the application fit. Within all the guidelines and parameters of the of the request, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I mean, I I only asked that question because I've never heard of it being used in the past. But it's an excellent use of CPC money, being the Housing Authority, just kudos to the board. And to the interim director, Colleen, from the Taunton Housing Authority for getting this whole project. If you've been down there and seen some of the conditions, I think it mentions the units were built in the nineteen sixties. And really, the state has not invested significantly in the upkeep of those properties for many, many years. This is really an ingenious way of putting money together to improve the housing for our elderly down at the housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I concur with that and as I had also received.
President?
Yes, sorry.
So what we understand is we have just number of the housing for the. Zero money that goes in for maintenance and upkeep of the buildings on an ongoing basis? Is that what happened?
I I think that's something that the Housing Authority would need to.
Because other cities and towns, they they do have that. I I talked with some people I know and 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 they they have it because, oh, sooner or later. Just like our own homes are going to need some updates and some some repairs. And and why doesn't this one have that type of system?
Well, of course.
I can make a comment, I sat on the board for eight years. So it revenue is generated through income that's generated through. Income, rent is driven through income, so that's all specific. And then, of course, the state is just historically. Like the the Housing Authority has fifteen employees, there's a total of maybe three and a half employees that have to maintain that. and a half employees that have to maintain that, so it's a very, very tight budget, yet a year they barely get by, and I would say in the last three years, they've probably done more preventative and active maintenance with the direction of the Taunton Housing Authority Director, who's sort of helping out the Housing Authority, because she's so well-versed at federal and state funding, so there's been a number of significant upgrades to the facilities, to infrastructure up there, as a result of that, it's just, it's been a really tough, tough budget, and you're competing with other housing authorities that are in much worse shape.
Thank you, Consular, and, and the nature of the repairs that we're speaking about here are more than just normal maintenance, these are very significant expenditures required. Thank you very much. All those in favor, this is a, a motion for, to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees, all those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Opposed? I see none, I thank you very much. That concludes our new business, and we could move on to citizen comments, if there are citizens who would care to address the council, I invite you to kindly step forward and give your remarks, Mr. Abaldi.
And I've already boxed with Lane again. So as, as we know, in less than three weeks, there'll be a special town election to not only elect eight of nine town council seats, but also change the town ordinance to allow, excuse me, for recreational marijuana to be sold in Bridgewater. A great deal has already been written and spoken about, the short and long-term effects of marijuana, proponents continue to talk about tax benefits, but leave out costs that will be imposed on Bridgewater, including health and public safety risks, medical, mental health and substance abuse professionals have all shared their experiences here in dealing with high school students, college students and adults, and they've stated that marijuana can be addictive, and is not as innocent as proponents would have you believe, history has shown that there could be long-term emotional and or physical costs associated with those who use or abuse the drug. There's no shortage of liquor stores in our town, we really want to add retail marijuana stores as well. The reality is, if you increase the availability of any drug, whether it's marijuana or, or anything else, it's a fact that usage will increase, and young people will be the most adversely impacted. I was looking at the town council's vision for Bridgewater the other night, on, taken directly from the town's website, and I'd like to highlight several supporting attributes in that vision. Number one, the vision will preserve our quaint, small-town aesthetic and highlight our historic heritage and charm. Number two, the vision will create better everyday lives for all generations and cultures. The question is, will the passage of question one help us achieve either of those vision attributes? On the contrary, I believe that the passage of question one will actually be in conflict with those attributes, and will inhibit the fulfillment of that vision. It's up to you, the council and voters, to decide whether or not you want recreational marijuana to be sold in our town, do you want to make marijuana more accessible, do you want to ensure the future success and viability of our town, don't pass up the opportunity to cast your vote and then regret it later. As citizens of this wonderful town, let's come together and decide on a future for Bridgewater that protects young people from addiction, that ensures families can thrive in a safe and drug-free environment, and positions our town to achieve the vision as described by you, our town leaders. Voting no on question one is the right choice for the future of our town, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Abaldi. Other citizens? Yes, Mrs. Hanson?
This is the last time we ever have to discuss this. I agree with everything Mr. Abaldi just said, I can't say it better than him, let's protect our community, vote no on question, the tax dollars is not going to be a savior of this town, people have to realize dangling that carrot is not going to be the be-all for this town. Retail pop shots aren't necessary, there's no hardship for anybody, if they want it, they know where they can get it, it's in other towns, we don't have to necessarily join all the other towns just because they are, we don't have to jump over that bridge because everybody else is jumping, there are other towns that are holding steadfast, and we'd like to be that that example, that we can survive without it, we don't need it to survive, and there's so many, many things, let's protect our community, ask yourself why you moved to Bridgewater, what you want in Bridgewater, and this shouldn't be part of what we need in Bridgewater, there's so many other things that we should be spending our time on. I'm going to drop that subject, I let my opinion be known, I'm going to change it a little bit, I've been wondering about the crosswalk that was removed at the town common in front of the Central Square Church and the Old Town Hall. I don't understand why that was removed, and I've looked and I watched, and in order to cross over, you have to go smack dab in the middle, in between, I think that's worse, either at the end or in the middle. That one right there makes more sense, because people are coming up Church Street, or they're coming from Spring Street, if they want to cross over to the common, or to the church, or whatever, they're now having to walk further down and then cross smack dab in the middle, they're better off, more visible to traffic, more visible and be able to see traffic better by parking there, I don't understand why that was removed, and I would appreciate if somebody could answer that or look into it, I would like to see that put back, and that's it, and I thank you, everybody, for their time, and we'll see what happens in January, thank you, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, have merry holidays, whatever fits, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other citizens for comment? And seeing none, we could move to council comments. Startling break with tradition, I would like to commence with Consular Rushton.
Talk about putting me on the spot, you're going to regret, going to regret giving me the mic. Now, I'll try to make it as brief as possible, you know, first, I just wanted to acknowledge everybody on the board, I think that over the last several years, made some fantastic friendships, and I appreciate all of the phone calls, the emails, some of you known much longer, but certainly appreciate the friendships, and that would include the town manager and town council. I think one of my takeaways here is, in the short time that I've been on, is, you know, I'd really like to see and more of an effort in terms of appreciation for town employees. I remember twenty years ago, you know, large town holiday celebrations and just recognizing the work of town employees, and I just think that, you know, we go through the motions day to day and don't recognize, it takes things like Captain Elder, you know, passing away, to realize how short life is, and just, you know, time just goes by so quickly, but I'd just like to see that as a sort of a parting thing. Unfortunately, you won't be able to get rid of me, because now I get to sit out there and pressure you to keep moving the fire building committee and the plans forward, and I assure you, I'm, I'm promising you that I'll give a hundred and ten percent into that project over the next couple of years, and hope to see that in fruition. When I was taking a little bit of time tonight, just to think about what's occurred over the last couple of years, not to bore you, but, you know, the overall theme of just looking at some of the resolutions that passed, I just want to highlight a few of them, a resolution aiding and supporting the reopening of businesses closed by executive and public health orders, as to your point earlier this evening, and just trying to get back out of COVID, resolution supporting the reduction of underage vaping in Bridgewater schools, a resolution designated in June nineteenth as a town holiday, a resolution relative to diversity and respect, a resolution supporting first responders, a resolution supporting the fair share amendment, a resolution honoring Juneteenth, and a resolution of recognition, recognition of gay pride month, I think that, you know, collectively, we've all, you know, really accomplished a lot in a very short amount of time, and I also want to recognize just all the town volunteers, although we know that we're short, it's the many volunteers that keep things moving. Lastly, as my sort of parting thing, I just, I wanted to talk about the ballot question that's coming up in, in my position, as many of you that have been around for a long time, I sat on the two thousand seventeen Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee, and I recently supported this going to the ballot, because I ultimately believe that the decision should be in the hands of the voters of this town, however, my personal position is I'm against it, and for so many reasons, most of them based on experiences in my own profession, and looking at things that are occurring already in our town, I don't necessarily care what grown adults want to do around recreational marijuana, the real impact on our community really has to do with juveniles, and I just want to just pull a, just a quick thing here that I just wanted to talk about, and approximately one in ten people who use marijuana become addicted, and when they start before the age of eighteen, the rate of addiction rises to one out of six. The amount of THC in marijuana has been increasingly steadily over the past few decades, and in addition to the comments made by Ed earlier, we've never really considered our position since we host a state university, and the impact on them in terms of enforcement, and what that means, as stated earlier, it's still federally regulated and can affect most students' federal financial aid. But leading marijuana increase used by teens and harmful results, just prior to Massachusetts legalizing marijuana, the Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance System estimated that five percent of youth between the ages of twelve and eighteen years of age were using or experimenting with marijuana in two thousand sixteen, in a recent survey, the same risk behavior surveillance system survey in two thousand nineteen, that had risen to just over twenty percent. Now, obviously, access in other communities that are around us is, it makes it easy for students, young people to get access, but I think if there's anything that we can do that makes that even just slightly more difficult, and that is restricting it in the town of Bridgewater, we should do the right thing, and voters should do the right thing. I can only ask that as people go out to vote, that you are educated, you're looking at scholarly information and research, and look at the numbers, look to the Cannabis Control Commission and what they have posted in recent surveys, and just make an educated vote, thank you very much.
Thank you, Consular, Consular Wood.
Great, thank you. First of all, I want to, I want to thank the three outgoing counselors, Colin Bottas is not here, and Frank Sousa, and Matt Rushton, whether we agree, disagree, whatever, it was great serving with you, everyone who serves here has the heart in the right place to want to make the community better, and just put the effort to follow through on, on all the pieces that they're working on, so appreciate the effort, I know from knowing you that you'll be involved in many other ways, and so, you may not be sitting at this table, you will be sitting at a different table, doing something effective for the town, so, so. Thank you for the words on, on the, on the ballot, man, I've disagreed on this, disagreement has happened, I am a data guy, I am a risk analysis guy, one of the reasons that, two reasons I have been pushing over the years to do this is because my district that I represented voted in favor in two thousand sixteen, they voted in favor last year, and the numbers from Quinnipiac, which does studies, just indicate that the popular opinion of recreation has, has increased, because they, they really do see that when you compare it against other aspects of what's going on now, for example, we just voted in licenses for twenty-six places where you can, where you can buy whiskey in town, twenty-six places, no one has talked about alcohol as being a problem, because alcohol is, is within our community, it's all around, it's in the high school, it's in the college, and, you know, it's, it's a risk factor that's there, Pat Neary probably said it best at the beginning of the, of the meeting, it is a short distance to shops, so what that means is the risk of putting of a barrier to getting it is gone, because it is a short distance to shops, it have already talked about street pot, and if you, if you look at the statistics now, the price of marijuana overall is dropping, because production overall has increased, street pot is all around us, and the reason we know this is because we've heard from experts in the field that say they are treating students and youths and adults for marijuana, so where did they get this, well, it's, it's available, so there again, risk analysis tells me it's all around us, it's not hard to obtain, it's, you know, right around the corner, it's a short distance to shops. So I do read all the reports, and, and the one that Ed, Ed talked about, the placebo effect is a, they call it a meta-report, I guess, so it looks at a lot of other reports, and one thing about reports like that is, it's very hard in this country to do an analysis on that, because marijuana at the federal level is still a Schedule One drug, and so trying to do analysis and lab reports and things like that is nearly impossible, without many, many hurdles, and so, you know, it talks about the placebo effect, the placebo effect on any, any study does go up, but I want to finish up my time here, just talking about the, the report that has always been articulated to us so many times, which is, it costs four dollars and fifty cents for every dollar of revenue, so when you look at a report like that, you have to ask for the source of the information, so the source is not the state of Calif, of Colorado, where it was generated, it's not a state report, it's not a local report, it's not a town report, it's not a city report, it's a report that was commissioned for a very conservative group who is anti-marijuana, and so when you break down the percentages in the report of what they're attributing that four fifty-two, it, it has nothing to do with municipal expenses, they're saying it's economic expenses and community expenses, and so the fifty percent of those expenses, the fifty percent of the four dollars and fifty cents is attributed to laziness, breaking prohibition and going back to jail, and high school dropouts, and for high school dropouts, that is, if you look at the analysis, they say it in the summary, but they never mention high school dropout again, what they do is they say, well, if you don't get a, you know, college degree, you don't earn this much money, if you don't get a master's degree, you don't get this much money, if you don't have PhD, you don't get this money, and they try to sum it all up into, into a cognitive way of thinking about the cost. I know a lot of people that didn't finish high school successfully, and went on to very, these very successful, you know, productive people, so when I look at this question on, on the, on the ballot for January seventh, you know, I look at risk analysis, is it going to change our community if it's a yes, or if it's a no, and it's not going to change the community, the risk is there already, it exists just across the border, it exists in high school, it exists in our streets, it's already there, we've heard from experts that they're treating for marijuana and other things already, so the risk isn't going to change, what is going to change is we're going to save one or two small businesses, because medical marijuana is on a decline, because there's so much retail available, so we're going to save a couple shops if they choose to do this, and we're going to make it, you know, focus on the medical conversion to retail, we're not opening up downtown, although someone did say, well, if we put one downtown, we could refer the dollars to downtown revitalization, I don't think that would really fly, but, you know, it was, it was a thought. So, so it's not going to cost, it is going to bring in revenue, and it's going to help a couple small businesses survive a downturn in their own market, when their competition is literally right across the border from Bridgewater, so I hope people support it for those reasons, and again, this is a free end to the year, happy holidays to everybody, and I will say, we got our Christmas tree from the Hanson's, and it is the best tree ever, so thank you to them for that, thank you.
Thank you, Consular, Consular Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to start off by congratulating the, the search that took place to replace our Economic and Community Development Director, and I wish Mr. Rulo the best in that position, it's a tough position, those positions, as, as the town manager knows, come and go throughout the state, I hope he brings, based on what I've read, brings the background and experience to help us forward, to help us with our economic development in the town, and also to Nora Ta, who will come back and, and serve on the cultural council, it's another area in the town that we need to improve on, also, I've known Jim Campbell for a very long time, since I've moved to Bridgewater, and congratulate him and his thirty-four years on the park and recreation for the town, it's, it's not that many people that served that long on the same committee for our community. It's not that many people that served that long on the same committee, uh, for our community. I wanna again thank the four speakers that spoke tonight in citizens' comments. Three of them on mostly on one issue, which I'll get to in a few minutes. But I wanna thank Mr. Perry for bringing up the issue on High Street. It's been an ongoing issue in this town, we've, we've debated that and have made changes before. But I will say that I did see the town manager take some diligent notes when you were speaking. And I'm sure he will take a look into that and see what can be done to address that, the traffic flow of those, uh, trucks. You know, we started this year, Mr. President, by Zoom meetings when Mr. Rushton was still the president. Made the transition to in-person meetings somewhere in the middle of the year, summertime. And, uh, you know, it's, it's nice to be back in this chamber to have our regular council meetings. I know there'll be flaws and changes along the way. And some committee meetings are still meeting through Zoom and so forth, but it's nice to be back here. In the council, at least our council meetings. We end the year, uh, by saying goodbye to three counselors who have chose not to run for reelection. I, I've known Peter Colan Bodis for, for a long time as well, since I've moved to Bridgewater. I know he's not able to be here. He is one of the originals of the original town council, we just got Bill Wood left. But, um, I appreciate the service that Mr. Colin Bodis, we all should for the service he gave to the town. Um, and his insight on, uh, community and economic development and other areas. And, uh, you know, Frank Sousa, I've known you for a while too in town. When you were first running for counselor, I was like, I don't really know if we're gonna get along too much. I don't know if he really likes me or not. But, um, we have gotten along pretty well and we've agreed on more things than we've probably disagreed, agreed on. And I think you've, uh, become a good friend and, um, I, uh, appreciate the service that you've had with the council. And, um, I still have that snowman in front of my light post up front, so, um, I wish you the best in whatever you continue to do. And I just hope you don't always come here at citizens' comments and yell at us, cause. And, um, um, Matt Rushton, I've, I've known you for a long time too, it goes back to my Sleckman days when your, your wife worked for the Sleckman's office. And, um, you've done, you've been a good friend too. Your tenure as president during the Zoom meetings and your work on the fire station, which will continue. You've been a tremendous asset to this council and, um, I know you'll continue to do, be visible in the community. And continue to do good things for the better of the community, cause I know you and your, your wife and family are, are entrenched in, in making this a, a great community. That we, um, all live in. And we also start the year with an election in January seventh. Most of you have unopposed and, um, three of you will be leaving, we'll have at least two new counselors. Uh, maybe three, there'll be maybe a write-in for the uncontested race, I'm not sure how that'll pan out. But I look forward to the first meeting in January tenth, we're all s- seating here. And as we begin, well, what perhaps might be, um, not a easy budget. But it certainly looks as though the revenue stream will, will be okay for the town of Bridgewater in fiscal twenty-four. The question on the ballot. As has been mentioned many times tonight. My position, as I've said two weeks ago, has been very clear. I don't think this is a good fit for the town of Bridgewater. It never has been something that I see is how we really benefit. From, uh, converting the recreational facilities to, uh, retail. Just recently, this past, past week in the town that I, I work in in Branch, there was a raid on a facility. Where they were making illegal gummy bears, uh, for street sale. And, uh, that's alarming, is alarming, uh, there were no town as well. They don't have any recreational facilities. But things like that, that are popping up throughout the Commonwealth, uh, hopefully that's not a trend. We don't need that in the town of Bridgewater, w- we have a lot of assets, we have a lot of things for people to do and, and, and we don't need to get into that. The state legislature, as I've said many times, is taking care of what we are trying to do through, with this question. And that's the point, I, I, another point I wanted to make. And the fact that although I'm, I'm against the sale of retail marijuana, it's like, why are we targeting specific facilities to be given those licenses? Not a fair and open process to those that might wanna do retail sale. And I think that this could lead to other areas of litigation, if it passes. I could be wrong, but it, 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 it could. But the bottom line is, I don't think, see, the money is not there, the headaches are. I don't think it's good for the town of Bridgewater, I'll be voting no. And I just ask, everybody has been mentioned before, take an educated, make an educated decision by doing some research to see how you really think, how you feel about this. And on that note, I wish everybody a happy holiday season and I too have a tremendous six-foot Christmas tree from Hanson Farm. That's still holding strong and, uh, uh, I wish you all the best of the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular, uh, Consular Moore.
Sure, uh, so also wanna congratulate, uh, Jim Campbell, uh, I knew him actually when I was growing up in Bridgewater. And he was having an impact then, had an impact on me. And I know he's had a huge impact on the town, so, uh, it was great to, to hear that today. Um, also wanted to thank everybody who spoke, I know this is an important issue. And I, uh, appreciate you sharing your, your perspectives. Also, Mr. Perry on the, the trucks, we've communicated as well. I think people know, um, I've gotten a bunch of communications actually about this issue, not only from High Street. But for Vernon Street, South Street and Forest Street, uh, those are three other streets in town. That have concerns with, with truck cut-throughs and it is an enormous impact on the residents who live on those streets. So as I, uh, mentioned in, in emails, I mentioned publicly, this is something that I'm interested in trying to find a solution to. And I encourage people to reach out to me. If they wanna pursue that. I also wanted to extend a welcome to the new community and economic, uh, development director. I did have the opportunity to meet him. Uh, and was very impressed, I think. In my experience, you know, there are typically people that have vision and there are people that are really good at executing. And it's very hard to find people that have vision and can actually execute against the vision. And in our conversations and what I hope he brings to Bridgewater, uh, is sort of this rare ability to. Uh, sort of inspire and think new thoughts and bring in good ideas, but also, uh, make them happen. And at least in our conversation, there are a lot of new ideas and a lot of ways to make them happen that I think would work in Bridgewater, so I'm excited about that. And then, uh, wrapping up, I did also want to, uh, thank, uh, the three outgoing counselors. Pete Colin Bodis, I probably doesn't know this, but when I got started, uh, some of the articles and blog posts he wrote way back when, they're still floating around. And so I learned a lot about Bridgewater actually by reading, um, but he wrote about it, uh, back in the day and so appreciated that. And, uh, my first experience on a subcommittee was with you Frank, uh, and I had no idea what I was doing. Uh, and you made me feel like I did, so, uh, certainly appreciated that. And also appreciate, um, just your, your honest perspective and the way that you're pushing, um, for things that matter to the community, so thank you. And then Matt, thank you, uh, the, the very first thing I ever did as a counselor was to show up at a residence house. To talk about an issue they were having, uh, and there is no instruction book for this. Uh, and I literally was elected and then, um, you know, had to go meet with someone, uh, and Matt met me there. And, you know, I think people get involved with this because they're passionate. I think they stay with this because somebody teaches them how it's done. Um, and that did that for me, uh, so I appreciate that. Uh, I also expect to see you, uh, continue to have an impact on Bridgewater. You know, I think the same way you showed up for me, uh, you certainly continue to show up for the town. So I wish you all the best in your next endeavor.
Thank you, Consular, uh, Consular George.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, just a few things. Obviously for January seventh for the vote, um, let's cross our fingers that while the nature is nice to us. Make it a, a good day so we can get a, a really good turnout. To echo what's already been said with Mr. Perry, I've been communicating with him on High Street. I actually take that section of street a lot, um, in my car, I only have a car. But I, I personally run into situations where I've had to stop at the bridge to let some really big trucks go by, uh, either way. So, um, I know, you know. Excuse me, but Mr. Dutton, we'll, we'll start the process of reviewing that whole situation, find out our options and, and go forward from there as well. That bridge is, is getting decimated, uh, almost daily, so I'm a little concerned about that as well as others. I was gonna say bye to Pete, but he's not here, but Matt, um, very much enjoyed working with you. I think you and I have the distinction of being the only president and vice president to never have an in-person meeting. In the town council. Which was, uh, as Mr. Gallagher brought up, a very unique time within Bridgewater, but it, it wasn't just us. I mean, we all worked very well together, uh, both in person and, you know, not in person. But I very much appreciate, uh, Matt's perspective, uh, what he brings to the table. Know the fire station's not gonna be named after you, but that's okay, um, keep up the good work from there as well. Uh, Frank, um, I've gotta say that I very much enjoyed working with you, both on the council, rules, procedures. I'm always of the mindset that if we, if you can have a group of different temperaments, talents and convictions. That group is gonna be very powerful and very successful. And as other people have alluded to, you come to the table with a lot of diversity, a lot of experience. Um, I don't think I can say enough to, to say thank you for your service as a veteran, uh, as a longtime resident. I haven't always agreed with what you said, but that, that's not the point of this. I think the point is that you've got a, you've got compassion, you with your heart on your sleeve and, uh, don't ever change. With that, I wanna wish everyone happy holidays, be safe out there and, uh, see you all next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular, Consular Souza.
First, I'll thank everyone for those wonderful comments, I really didn't know I was that good. I have to end my career on this council by talking about our favorite subject and that's marijuana. One of the things I have not heard from anyone for a long time was. I personally spoke with the police chief. And he said that of course they have the state police association meetings that they have. And they discuss different issues and some of the towns that have, um, marijuana already being sold on it. He's predicting that if we pass this, he is going to have to hire. Two more police officers to help control this. And he said, do you think the council is gonna give me the money to hire them? Because if we don't, we're gonna have a problem. But just recently I learned something else, our police department is short two officers already due to retirement. And they're in the process of looking for two to replace them. So if this thing gets passed and in three or four months we start having problems. Will we already have those two officers back on the force and able to bring in two more to help us? Or we're just going to have to bear it, grin and bear it because we voted for it. I'm voting no, I've always been against it and I've, I've never held back telling anybody that. I wanna thank everyone for their comments tonight. I, I think it was a privilege to, to really be able to serve on this council and to serve the people. And, uh, I, I, I'd like to really think that I'm going away would actually have done some good. There's no real way of measuring how much good we do. I don't think so, because I don't sit there and say, oh, I did this and I did that, it's, it's, we did it, we had to work as a team. But I'm going to tell you something, uh, I won't give you any names. When I first came on the council, I still think this is very funny, two of the council members called me old man. The only time they'd call me Souza was when I was sitting at this table. Other than that, they referred to me as old man. And about four months later, I called him aside and I said. Guys, there's two things that you wanna start hoping for. One, uh, that you live as long as I have, because at that time I was seventy years old. And two, you're as healthy as I am when you get to that seventy years old. Well, in a couple of days, I'm gonna be seventy-seven years old. So that's part of the reason why I'm leaving the council, because my wife and I are retired. We haven't been able to do a lot of things we had on our little bucket that we wanted to do. So now I'm leaving the council, but that does not mean you will not see me in this room anymore. You'll probably see me sitting next door to, uh, Mr. Rushton at that time. Sitting right out there and listening and, and, and maybe sometimes coming to the podium on some of the items. But it'll always be, as I thought from the beginning, is what's good for the town and what we could discuss as a group. I wanna thank everyone, have a nice holidays.
Boy, thank you, Consular, uh, Consular Perry.
Thank you. Once I didn't have to start, so that was refreshing. Exactly, um, but that's alright, um, again, this is a big meeting, uh, a lot of, you know, changes are about to happen, so a lot needs to be said. But to start off with, I certainly wanna start off by extending my sincere condolences to the family of Captain Eric Elder, uh, his wife and children. For obviously his recent passing, I was not able to attend the, the wake this evening, but, uh, I just wanted to publicly extend my condolences and thank him for his many, many years of service. And to what, uh, Council Souza was just saying, you know, uh, we don't know how much time we, we, we have here. So, uh, you know, take, uh, take the best, uh. Your best, uh, life and, and, and do what you wanna do, whether it's volunteer, whether it's, you know, retire and, and do the things you wanna do. But life is short. Just take care of yourself and, and live your best life. But, uh, we do thank Captain Elder for all his years of service and, uh, and, uh, very sorry for his family. Secondly, I wanna, uh, again, thank Jim Campbell for his years of service and, uh, his, uh, his, uh. Mentioning early in their meeting was, was well deserved, um, I've been in Alliance with, with Jim for many years, so I've known Jim for many years. And know how much he gets involved with behind the scenes, a lot of different things, not only recreation, but in school, building committees and things of that nature. He's put his heart and soul into a lot of things in this town, so he's really one of the, one of the good guys that's helped to, uh, to build, make this town what it is today. So thank you to Jim for all his years of service and dedication to the town of Bridgewater. I also wanna welcome, uh, Robert Rully, I look forward to working with him, especially with, uh, downtown revitalization. As long as the vote goes well for me, uh, coming up to December seventh. But, uh, my hope is, uh, to, to work with him and, and work on the downtown and to, uh, also thank Nora Ta for stepping back up. I've, I've, uh, uh, been involved in Bridgewater Fourth of July years ago and Nora was involved back then. And, well, she is a, a very knowledgeable person in the, uh, the area of the arts, so it's good to have her back. So we thank her for, for coming back to that committee. Let's see, uh, I wanted to, uh, also, you know, thank the, the counselors, uh, Colan Bodis, Souza and Rushton for their, their years of service. Obviously, you guys know I was on the council before, stepped away and came back. So I've known Peter for quite a number of years and, uh, he was been obviously a very vital, uh, person over the years on the town council. So his presence will be missed. Counsel Souza, again, for all your energy and the work that you do, uh, veterans and, uh. River for trees, I think all that is very, uh, very, uh, much needed and, and, and to be commended. And, uh, again, thank you for spending your, uh, many of your years in your seventies with us on the council and, uh. Work is greatly appreciated. The Council Rushton, I've known Matt for many years, um, actually before he even got on the council, we had a heart-to-heart conversation over the phone. Whether he should do it or not, so my, uh, my belief is hopefully my, uh, my conversation with him, uh, convinced him to, to join the, the group. And he's done a wonderful job and, um, I, uh, got to, uh, get his tail end of his presidency when I got back on the council. And despite the hardships that COVID and Zoom meetings, uh, had, um, he did a wonderful job as president. When I got back on the council, so I wanna commend him for that and certainly commend him for all his work on the, uh, fire station. I'll, uh, put it out there for the council needs a new representative to be on that committee, I would love to be that person. Since I originally was a, a member of the starting committee with Captain Rod- uh, with Chief Rogers when it was first, uh, being put together. So I would, uh, love to go back and work on that. But again, thank you guys for your, uh, years of service and I wish you the best in your future endeavors and I'm. But again, thank you guys for your years of service and I wish you the best in your future endeavors. And I'm sure we'll see you here at some meetings. So far, obviously the, the, you know, the, the big election, January 7th. Certainly encourage all citizens to come out and vote. I'm hoping the weather is conducive for people to come out and cast a ballot for whoever you'd like to see on the town council. I am the, one of the only contested races. And you know, the two other candidates running against me, fine individuals. So please come out and support your candidate of choice. But obviously it's important to come out and vote and I hope we do get a good turnout for it. When it comes to the, the question that everyone's been talking about. Personally, you know, been born and raised in this town. I, I want to see the best for Bridgewater as, as you know, the, Mr. Rivaldi read the vision for Bridgewater. I think this particular situation, retail marijuana in the town of Bridgewater is not a good fit. I, from very beginning, have not wanted to see retail marijuana in the town. We are a college town. We're a town of wonderful youth, the new sports, new activities. I just don't think the two go together. And unless the state comes down and mandates every town in the Commonwealth to have it, so be it. But up until that point in time, if we have the chance to not have it, I am full supportive of not having retail marijuana in this town. I just doesn't, don't think it brings anything to the community. We've worked too hard to say no to drugs over the years through DARE programs and, and, and other, you know, groups that have, you know, worked hard to, you know, teach our youth and children to, to say no to these types of things. Whether it brings revenue or not, it just doesn't, doesn't ring true to use that type of money to pay for things. Whether it's schools, whether it's, you know, kid things, it just, it's, it's, it doesn't add up. It doesn't ring true and it's not something I want to see. So I personally will be voting no on January 7th on this issue. And as the other counselor said, please make your best informed decision going forward that you feel the town of Bridgewater should go in. But that's where my stance is on that. Lastly, I would just like to wish everyone a very happy holidays, Merry Christmas. At least not Vidal, whenever you want to celebrate. We worked hard to get as many decorations on the council, on the, on the commons this winter to represent as many holidays as possible and maybe more will be coming in the future. So I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. For my part, there's not a lot left to say. But I certainly want to thank everyone who's come to before us to speak tonight. For the most part, these are some familiar faces, but we have come to value your opinions and please don't think that because we may arrive at a different conclusion than you have, that, that we disregard your input. Because we do not. We, we respect your input and we certainly welcome your comments and the support you give us. Mr. Rivaldi made some very gracious remarks at the outset concerning the council and the work that we do and, and on behalf of the council, I appreciate that, Mr. Rivaldi, and thank you very much for making those comments. Frank, you made a great point just a moment ago when you spoke about the fact that we act as a body. We act on consensus. And so while any of us can and do bring forward individual initiatives. It's really a product of our consensus and we speak through our votes. And I think that that's an important thing to remember always because certainly each one of us has had a hand in whatever, whatever action we have ultimately adopted throughout the course of the year. And I think that we all should be proud of, of that. Of that record of accomplishment. And I think that as we look ahead to next year with some new faces to be among our members, I think that it's healthy. It, it provides a new, new energy to the council, new ideas. And I think that's always very, very good for us, but there's no question but that we will miss the, the expertise that some members have brought here who just won't be here in January. Unless they decide to join us again at some future election, which is always an option. So in any event, I do just want to wish everyone a very happy holiday season. I hope that everyone can enjoy it safely and together with family and friends. And I hope that, I hope that we avoid a potential heavy winter storm on the 7th of January and over the coming Christmas holiday, by the way. And for that, I just want to thank you all for all that you do, for all you, that you have brought to the council. And do have a safe and enjoyable, very happy holiday. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move, Doug.
Postman second. All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I thought not. Thank you very much.